Welcome Bob.
Hello.
All right, welcome to the August 20th, 2012 Shakopee City Budget Workshop Meeting. We have honor to have the Louisville and Jackson Town Boards here tonight. Kim, will you please do the roll call?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilor Sherman absent. Councilor Lehman.
I'm here.
Councilor Clay.
Here.
Councilor Whiting.
Here.
Mayor Tapke.
Here. All right, approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections?
We have nothing from staff.
Anything from council? Pass the list.
What's the agenda?
Second. Standing by Councilor Whiting. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Passed unanimously. All right, before we get into item number three with a joint meeting, I'd like everybody to introduce themselves. So if you can go around the room. I'm Brad Tapke, Mayor.
Mayor Lehman, City Council.
Louie DeDriscoll, Louisville Township Treasurer.
Steve Clay, Councilman.
Oh!
It's you.
Luanne Lemke, Louisville Township Clerk.
John Waxman, Louisville Township Supervisor.
Bob Piper, Louisville Township Supervisor.
Kevin Teis, Louisville Township Supervisor.
Julie Linehan, Shakopee Finance Director.
Rick Coleman, Shakopee Fire Chief.
Rose Minkie, Jackson Township Clerk.
Tom Waxman, Jackson Township Supervisor.
Paul Westphier, Jackson Township Supervisor.
Chris Brinkhaus, Jackson Township Supervisor.
Jamie Polly, Parks and Recreation Director.
Jay Whiting, Shakopee City Council.
Mark McNeil, City Administrator.
All right, wonderful. You guys back there?
Chris Wilson, I'm the Assistant City Administrator.
Kim Waxman, Secretary Finance.
All right, very good. We are going to move right on to item number three, A, Fire Department 2013 Budget Request.
Chief.
And Chief, just so you know, I understand that both Township Boards have just gotten these today, so if there are any questions, be kind to them and don't yell at me too much.
I will. What did we get today? This? Oh. Mayor, City Council, Township Board. I'm here to present the 2013 budget outline and what we have proposed. First, just a little overview of the Fire Department. The Fire Department is responsible for providing safety to the city of Shakopee, Jackson Township, Louisville Township, in the following activities that are listed up there. Fire suppression, of course, vehicle extrication, medicals, hazardous materials, confined space rescue, water rescue, high and low level rescue, fire education and prevention, and fire inspections. Our current staffing level for 2012, we have one full-time Fire Chief, one Fire Inspector, Fire Marshal, which is full-time, one office service worker, that's full-time, and 46 paid-on-call firefighters at this time. The proposed 2013 budget represents about an 8.2 decrease over the 2012 budget, the way it's set up right now. The decreases are due to the following. Decrease in part-time wages, which is our paid-on-call folks' wages, and a decrease in our fire pension, that is, goes out to our paid-on-call folks. They get paid $7,500 per year service if they meet 32 percent of the calls for the year. Our fund has been doing really well, and we haven't had a lot of retirements, so we've benefited from that. The other thing that I did not mention on here that I forgot, I apologize, is a decrease in our equipment fund. After recalculating some numbers with our Finance Director, our rental, internal rental fee for our equipment has gone down, which has been part of that, 8.2 percent. Also in the 2013 budget, I have proposed an additional wage and benefits for four full-time firefighters. This would be for a half-year. It'd be $125,000. A full-year, of course, would be $250,000. This is to increase our response times. Our response times in the city right now during the day is, in my opinion, lacking. We need to increase that to meet the standards that are out there today. Additionally, we had wage and benefits for six more paid-on-call firefighters, which would be roughly $40,000. This would be an increase to start staffing up for Station 3 out in South Bridge. If we funded the total staffing, this would result in a 0.09 percent increase over our 2012 budget. Less than 1 percent, our budget would go up in 2013. There is no capital improvements requested in 2013. Our future budget issues will continue to be adding paid-on-call staff to plan for that second, or that third station out in South Bridge. And additionally with that, we'll have to be looking at a full-time training officer to train 65 paid-on-call firefighters, and to start providing some daytime training abilities, so we can maybe pull some more nighttime people and help our daytime response once we get to three stations. With that, I will answer any questions that you have to start with.
Questions?
Could I just say, obviously what Chief proposed with one of the improvement packages is going to full-time responders during the day. This is something that we've struggled with for years. We talked about doing duty crew as a potential during the day, and that would be to increase the use of the current paid-on-call firefighters. That's a possible solution, but it also suggests some other issues that we need to resolve. Going to full-time is a solution for that, but again, creates its own set of issues. The $125,000, again, is for six months. That means in years to come, that would be about a quarter of a million dollars that you're adding on top of the existing budget. There's no easy way that we've found. I know the Scott County Association for Leadership and Efficiency has looked at what Shakopee, Prior Lake, and Savage could potentially jointly do, and at this point, we don't have resolution of that. Right now, what he's bringing forth is something that would at least address it from Shakopee's standpoint. The other thing he talked about is something that we really need to have some direction from the City Council on, and that is how serious you want us to be about providing for a third station, which would be in the South Bridge area. In November, I think we had a workshop at that time, and Council-elect and Mayor-elect were in attendance at that one. We need to gear up for another 20 firefighters in order to get that operational in three years. There's, in addition to the personnel costs, and obviously, we'd have the care and feeding of another building in the South Bridge area. So those are two fairly significant policy issues that we need to have some direction on as we move into next year's budget.
Okay, so Councilor Clay first.
Do you have a guesstimate yet as to the cost for a full-time training officer?
I believe back in November, we estimated the full-time training officer. Give me 30 seconds here, and I'll find it. I think it was roughly $75,000, if I recall right. A year or six months? A year.
And that is total cost?
That was total cost, benefits.
Currently, for our training officer, we're spending how much?
Right now, we spend $5,600.
Councilor Whiting.
Chief, or Mr. Mayor, Mark, whoever can answer this, at what level of scale, ready to take a hard look at this and work this out for the different communities?
Council and Luanne Lemke has been involved with the Scale Services Delivery Committee. As I recall the direction on that, Tom Terry, the City Administrator from Elko Newmarket, is going to be putting something together for later this fall to bring this back for discussion. I'm not optimistic that we're going to be able to, certainly not going to be able to anything done this year. Luanne, do you have any other recollections on that one?
I'm working with Tom on that particular item. One of the things we want to do is, first of all, is establish a common foundation, like a baseline, across all the townships and the cities as to what does it require to have service? So it's basically a training for all the elected that are there. And then the next step is, what seems to make the most sense? We've had, Rick, at our service delivery meetings before with some of the other Fire Chiefs, really trying to talk about ways in which they can conserve. My question would be, do you guys leverage your fire training professional across the different, like Savage, Prior Lake, and some of the other organizations? Or is it just someone specifically for the city of Shakopee?
Well, right now, we have our own training officer. Savage has their own, and Prior Lake has their own. We do cross-train, so we'll go to Savage and train with Savage. Savage people will come to train with us. So on a Monday night, if Savage has guys that can't make their Tuesday night drill, they'll come to our Monday night drill, and vice versa. So we bounce our guys back and forth that way.
Well, and then the next step, I just wanted to kind of say is that, and then Mark, I know you're familiar with this too, is after we do this baseline, kind of establish this foundation, the next step is to say, what makes sense? Let's just pretend like all the boundaries came down, regardless of where you're located, but we look at it to say, what makes sense? For instance, when you're looking at your South Bridge station, how close then would the next Savage or Prior Lake station be? Are we really taking a look at this without the boundaries? To say, are we really building stations where it really makes sense in the future? And there's so many different variables, just like development, you know? When will development happen? Where will it happen? All those types of things. So, I mean, there is a lot of work that's being done, but we make sure that we have the experts involved at the same time.
When we look at fire stations, ISO rating comes up a lot. ISO rating basically says that you should have an engine within a mile and a half of every residence for your response times. The way the Savage station is located, their new Station 2, Prior Lakes, new Station 2, and our South Bridge station, that gives us our mile and a half. So this has been discussed between our Fire Chiefs already, to kind of place these stations where they should be, to keep us within that mile and a half radius of the built-upon area of the city limits. So, to answer your question, yes, it's been looked at, and the reason hence the station in South Bridge would have to be there to meet them ISO ratings. If you don't want to meet the ISO ratings, that's the council's prerogative. Alls that does is mean that your insurance rates will eventually go up when they come and do an ISO rating.
Chief? You referenced the fact that each of the three big cities in the northern part of the county have their own part-time training officer. Is a full-time training officer something that could be shared between the three of them?
Yeah, I think it could be. I mean, Prior Lake, or Savage, kind of has a full-time training officer. Their Assistant Chief, that is, full-time. They have a full-time Chief and an Assistant Chief. He's also their Training Chief. So they do one training monthly, during the, one training exercise, once a month, on a Tuesday or a Wednesday morning, that we can go to, but that's not enough training for a firefighter to keep up his skills. They need to be trained once a week. So, if we had them doing a daytime training drill, and we had a full-time Training Chief that could do one, we could have two opportunities for these guys to be, or firefighters to be, being trained during the day.
Councilor Whiting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The new recruits, when I was a fireman, we went around the different county, different areas, different fire stations. Would this Training Officer train those new recruits? Rookie kind of? They would probably be part of the class structure. Right now, county-wide, we do Fire 1, Fire 2, and our First Responder, all down at the Jordan Training Facility. All the Fire Departments in Scott County hire at the same time. We all hire in the spring, get our new recruits onboard by August 1st, so they can all go to school together down at the Training Facility. So we're already collaborating all that effort, and it's reducing our training cost because we've got such a large group. And that's, instructor for that is part of that scale, Training Facility? The instructor that we actually use is part of, he's not part of the county Training Facility. He's actually, he's a member of a Fire Department that has the skillset to, and the instruct, and he can be, how do I want to say this? Hennepin County Technical College endorses him. So he's paid a fee from the different groups? Correct. He's paid from Hennepin County, or Hennepin County Technical, for his services.
Chief can talk about that.
Councilor Lehman.
Chief, a mile and a half currently, that places the majority of Shakopee residents out of ISO insurance rating.
That is correct. In the South Bridge area, yes.
I'd guess I'm a mile and a half away from where I live.
No, you fall within the mile and a half.
To which station?
You'd be from Station 1.
Prior Lake?
Our main station, yes, you are.
Further than a mile and a half away. Anyway, doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me to have three communities attached to each other, all with the same needs, and not collaborating to try to save a buck and be efficient for all three at the same time.
Can I ask you a question? Which part are you talking about there? Are you talking about the station, or are you talking about the firefighters, or which part?
Trainer, the stations you already covered. So, it would be the Training Officer and the Duty Crew, because apparently, everybody's got the same problem in the area of daytime response. You already addressed the station, just a couple minutes ago, about the 1.5 miles between the three, and all three were communicating that with each other to make sure that they weren't overlapping. At least, that's what I heard. So I was listening. Unlike somebody else.
I just have a hard time following you sometimes.
The Duty Crew that you're proposing, or full-time, or whatever, daytime response guys, is that four to man a truck?
That is four to man a truck. That is correct.
Okay. How many do we have at Public Works?
We have three at Public Works.
Okay, and we have a Fire Inspector/Fire Guy.
Correct.
And then, we'd have a Training Guy. So why don't we utilize, if we have a Training Person? If, let's say we did get a Training Person, I would have to assume that this person is qualified to be a firefighter.
He would have to be qualified to be a firefighter. That is correct.
Okay, so we could use that person as part of the daytime response. Correct?
Correct.
We could use the existing Fire Inspector?
I would have to change his job description, but yes, we could do that.
We, as council, could change his job description.
Correct.
And we could use, you've got three at Public Works, so you're probably going to get one or two of them for sure to respond.
It varies from day to day, how many of those respond, yes.
Okay. There again, it would be a handbook change for the city. But then again, I'm going back to Savage and Prior Lake, and Midwakaton, and everybody else. If they've got the same problem, why are they not addressing it? Or are they addressing it? And if they are, how are they addressing it?
They're all looking at it. I can't speak for them, but I guess I've taken a bold step here to say that I'm tired of not having a daytime response, and we are not, as a city, meeting the standards that are set forth by NFPA, which is the National Fire Standards 1720, which are for paid-on-call or volunteer firefighters. So, I, to be honest, I am putting myself out on a limb here, with City Council and with the general public. I'm tasked with the responsibility of having a good response time to our residents. I guess what I'm asking from the City Council is, what is that response time you want? I can build you a Fire Department to meet your expectations, but without that expectations, I cannot do that.
And what's your current expectations that you, what are our expectations of you currently?
Currently, right now, currently, right now, our average response time during the day is about 15 minutes. That's on a typical good day. It can get worse than that. It can get up to 20 minutes sometimes, waiting for a truck, a big red truck, to get at somebody's residence door. To me, that's unacceptable. The national standard for what we live in, we have 29.55 square miles that we cover in the city of Shakopee. We have roughly 37,000 people. If you divide that, that's 1,250 residents per square mile. The national standard says we should have 15 responders in eight minutes on-site. That's what the standard is. Now, the standard is a standard. It doesn't mean we have to meet that, but what are your expectations?
Now, if we're going to really get into the response time during the day, my thought would be, are we going to station them at the new building over here? Because if there's a train going through town, from that station, you're going to have to go this way and underneath 69 to get inside the tracks.
There's a lot of what-ifs. What if?
To meet that response time.
The response time, we would come out of our main station for our response time, because it's the center of town. It gives the same response time to everybody in the city of Shakopee. It's a lot more practical, and it spreads it out. It's more evenly spaced. Putting it over on the west end of town leaves South Bridge completely empty.
Right. So, really, we're going to end up saying our response time still isn't what it needs to be, so now we need to man both?
Maybe eventually, yeah, but I think this is a step in the right direction.
Mr. McNeil.
Mayor and Council and Supervisors, I think, you know, one of the problems that we've had is just the size of the area that needs to be covered. We had talked about if each city would have a driver, and they'd take a truck, and would rely upon then full-time staff in Savage and Prior Lake to come to that location. It's still a matter of response time. If the call comes into something in Jackson Township, and you're waiting for a responder from Savage to get over there, so you have four people on-site, so you can enter the building, you know, that's going to be more than 20 minutes, and that's not going to do anybody any good that way. So we've all struggled with what is a possible solution to this jointly. Training Officer might be something, because that's not time-critical, as the Chief has talked about. When he says that it's a guideline, that is a guideline, but you pay for it with increased insurance ratings, because your ISO rating is higher. So it's a question from a policy standpoint, is what's acceptable to you? You know, we can build six fire stations to serve the townships in the city, and we'll certainly have a better response time, but, you know, the cost on that is obviously, it's not going to have a good payback. His recommendation right now is, at least, let's get started with some daytime response with four full-time firefighters.
Chris.
Well, I just had one quick question. I mean, it's, as Mr. Lehman was saying, wouldn't it make more sense to hire them as city employees so that they're doing something, so we're getting some value out? I mean, I don't know how many guys we need to man these stations on a 24-hour basis, you know what I mean? For daytime. If they were working at the city, I, I mean, I've talked to people at the city, and from what they say, they have no problem letting those people go to these calls. It's part of the deal.
Mayor?
No, that's not true.
Chris.
If I might, Matt referenced that we have three full-time employees in Public Works that are also paid-on-call firefighters, and the Fire Marshal is a paid-on-call firefighter as well. The 15-minute response time that the Chief is talking about during the day is with relying on those people. We're doing what you suggest, Councilmember Lehman, right now, and the best we can get out of it is a 15-minute response time, A. And B, I hear a different message from our Public Works Department, which is that the absence on a moment's notice of those three individuals can be very disruptive and have a negative impact on the efficient operation largely of our Public Works Department, when those three individuals halt what they're doing, and they're often working in a crew on Public Works to, you know, depart and respond to a fire call, so.
So Chief, if we were to hire four additional full-time firefighters, what would they be doing all day long? Like, what tasks do we have?
Okay. Their task, basically, they'd assist us, they'd assist in inspections, maintaining, repairing all our fire-related equipment. We have SAWs, we have SCBA equipment, we have numerous high-tech equipment that you have generously bought for us, that's very expensive, that needs to be maintained. Right now, it's maintained basically by qualified individuals. They get a meager $1,500 a year to show up every, once a week, for three or four hours, and they go through the equipment. They'd be maintaining this equipment for us. They could start maintaining our facilities, performing house duties, buildings, sweeping floors, washing floors, cleaning offices, performing minor repairs on our buildings that, right now, we're doing on our own. Nobody's getting paid to do it. They're just doing it. Right now, our facilities takes care of a lot of our office stuff. Our bays, anything in the bay area, or turnout gear area, is basically our responsibility. We're replacing light bulbs. Our guys are replacing light bulbs in the bays. They're basically taking care of our bay areas and all our equipment. They'd assist, we'd start having more fire prevention activities and education duties that they could be doing. They could be going out to schools. Right now, Tom is very taxed with trying to make sure all the fire prevention stuff gets done. On an average week, he's got three or four groups coming through the fire station for some activity, be it an hour, be it a half hour, he's got to go do this. We'd like to start some kind of inspection program on our commercial buildings, so we can get out and see them, maintain our lock boxes, that we can get into these buildings in the middle of the night when there's nobody there, for certain reasons, whatever it may be, a fire alarm to a fire, so we ain't damaging more product than we have to. There's just numerous and numerous things that they would be doing. They would not be sitting on the couch, watching TV, eating bomb bombs. They'd be out there doing something, the eight hours that they're there. There is work there for them.
Councilor Whiting.
Chief, we've had this discussion before. We have 46 on-call firefighters now. What if that was 66? Would that, a certain percentage of that, you'd think would be able to respond during the day. Would that cover your needs? Yeah, I don't know where I'd house 60 firefighters right now in the two stations that I had. I don't. You'll need that amount for the third station. Yes. I don't have, I mean, we could make do if we were building a third station, but adequate space for all the equipment, as far as their personal turnout, locker room space, that kind of stuff, I do not have at the stations right now. I'll follow up to that. If we go with the four on-call day crew, full-time, that'd be a union crew, and they'd be there forever. If we got up to 85 firefighters, 90, whatever, pick a number, they would always be there, because moving back from that would be very difficult, wouldn't you say? I would say, once we make the move to full-time, yes, it'd be hard to turn back. Not to say that we can't. I'm not going to say that, I wouldn't come out right out and say that they'd be unionized. That would really depend upon, in my opinion, how fair they were treated as employees. As long as we're treating them fair, I don't see them unionizing. Me personally, I would never unionize, but that's my personal opinion.
You work for us, you don't get an opportunity to be a unionized.
I know, I know. The problem with hiring more paid-on-call folks to solve a problem as far as daytime response is, in my opinion, putting a Band-Aid on the fix. There's no guarantee that those employees will not get another job somewhere else. They may still be paid-on-call folks, and I can't fire them for getting a different job somewhere else and moving out, you know, as long as they're within the response time where they live. So, you may get a percentage that make daytime response, but there's no guarantee. By hiring the full-time firefighters, you are guaranteeing a response time to your residents, that during the day, we are going to be there.
Luanne, Dennis first.
Question, and correct me if I'm wrong, we said about an average 15-minute response time currently?
Currently.
And is that the same average for the townships, both Jackson and Louisville?
No, it's not. I'll be, I only did it for the city to get started. Be honest, I didn't want to go through a lot of entail work to get right down to the second it takes to get to every residence and response time, until I had a good sense of direction, which way the City Council wanted me to go.
And a follow-up to that is, especially with the ISO rating, especially for us in the townships, that's one of the things, as homeowners, that we need to take a look at, because especially, it's possible that our premiums will go up, because we aren't within so many miles of a fire station.
Correct, and you don't have city water out there either, so it's hard for your ISO rating to really gain big balance. really gain big bounds and leaps until you get that water out there.
That's an important thing to say, is every time we have a fire in a township, a tanker truck has to come out with water. I mean, so there's things that we need in order to, you know, be provided that service, so.
And, and that's the challenging part that we face during the day. If I get my full, my, my guys out of city public works and, and, uh, Tom, uh, my fire marshal, they're on an engine coming out, 'cause I need a pumper there first. Now, I'm still waiting for that tanker that is coming whenever somebody shows up. If I have the full-time firefighters there, now I have the ability to say, okay, my public works guys, when you respond to a rural fire, your job is to bring tanker. They could be bringing the city tanker and our, and our tanker at the same time. So, it would benefit you too, in the long run.
Okay, thank you.
You- Mr. Clay? Probably, since our new westernmost station has only been open for a short time, you probably really don't have enough fire calls to be able to judge what the response times are gonna be to the, to the townships yet.
Uh, not a real good, 'cause we, we don't get a lot of calls out there. I mean, it's not like we're running out to the townships every day. Um, I can tell you, since we've moved to that station, our nighttime response has just gone way up. I have ten guys that live within blocks of that station during the night. Um, they're, they're scary quick, I, to be honest. So, nighttime, we don't, we don't have an issue.
Councilwoman.
Well, we've gotta have a decent response time. I mean, that's, that's pretty much the most important thing off the bat. We just need to figure out a way to do it in an economically sound way. Uh, when we first had this discussion, the council at that time, previous council, talked about having an incentive pay structure for the daytime response. And they opted not to, to do that, and I, I still think that's something to test the waters on. I'd like to see maybe a twenty, thirty-dollar an hour response time for daytime response, and see if we get more folks willing to respond today, and maybe that fixes the problem. If it doesn't, at least we know we tried it. It does come down to economics, which is what the discussion was at that time, that they're leaving a job that's paying them, you know, twenty, thirty, twenty-five bucks an hour to go make ten, and it's, it's a little brainer.
Yeah, the other problem that has come into it is, yeah, that, that full-time job is paying their, their bills. They're, it's paying whatever they need to do in life. And with the downturn, a lot of employers have shrunk their employers, uh, to the bare minimum. Who, if I was an employer, or somebody else was an employer, who would be the first person to go if this guy's running the fire calls all the time, and he ain't being productive? Even if he is very productive when he's there, he's, he's, he's gotta, it's in the back of his mind all the time, so I ca, these guys, the firefighters are not leaving all the time from their daytime job anymore because of that.
But don't we, don't we make that problem worse by increasing the tax rate on the businesses that are currently downsizing because of the pressures of the economics?
It's a wheel.
Legislature.
The wheel just keeps spinning.
Yeah, you can't fix that.
Bob?
Um, with the four full-time firefighters, and it takes four to run a truck, are these guys gonna go, like, from station to station? Are they gonna be stationed in your main one?
They'd be-
Um, and when they do go from station to station, are they gonna be in a truck?
Yeah, they'd be stationed out of the main station. When they were doing other activities at other station, yes, they would be taking a fire truck from one station to the next. If they're going out to do an inspection, they'd be taking a truck. They'd be a group of four going out to do the inspection, or whatever duties that needed to be done that day. So, they would be ready to respond, no matter where they were in the city.
Councilwoman.
I assume that, uh, the costs of this full-time staff would be spread out to the townships, and so I'd like to hear from them and see not only that cost, but, uh, their, more of their feeling on the subject.
Chief, can you first go over how, um, the payment structure works for that? Is that an easy one to handle? Or Julie would be easier?
I might have to get Julie to help me with this one. This is not the easiest, uh, structure to follow.
Just for the record, we were, yeah, given direction, I think, by everyone at the last annual time we got together to look at the, uh, services contract that we've had with the townships. That's been around since the early nineties, as I recall. We've met once and didn't get where we're going on that one. Since that time, I think probably the Scale Services Committee has been interested in doing something that might be applicable countywide, so it's sort of languishing until that, uh, discussion keeps going.
Okay.
Okay. As, this may look familiar, this is a format that was developed several years ago, that's been in place, that determines based on the budgeted costs of the city of Shakopee's fire services, which include the fire management budget as well as the facilities budget, not the inspections. So, those are, there's three categories in fire, and the cost sharing does not involve the inspections. So, it's primarily determination of a cost with reduction for certain items that are in the original agreement, such as fuel, some truck rent, uh, some rental for stations, uh, paid-on-call. There's just a lot of gyrations that go through this, uh, determination of an amount. And, you know, in a, in a brief summary, what it does is it takes the actual shared cost and divides it by the percentage of value of city, Jackson, and Louisville. And roughly, we're looking at three percent shared to Jackson, just slightly over five percent to Louisville, and the remaining ninety-one percent to the city.
That's the value of physical structures as opposed to land?
It's the market value.
Total market value.
Right.
So, with, so with corn at seven dollars and eighty-seven cents a bushel, we could, we could anticipate that townships are gonna be paying a lot more money here.
Oh, yeah. Don't forget the soybeans, too.
Did not work for you.
Yeah, yeah, don't forget the soybeans.
They need to put it out, 'cause we need to eat.
So, that, that's just a, a brief overview of how the billing is calculated and then shared and billed. Is that sufficient?
Thank you.
I don't wanna go into great detail.
Yeah, no, that was exactly what we needed. All right, so what does, uh, everyone think is what we're talking about? Necessary? Is it not anything that townships care about? Where are you guys at? Bob, what was your last name again?
Peever.
Peever, okay, thank you.
In relationships to what we have now, and what it would cost with the additional firefighters, where does that show up in our percentage? How do, does this page explain that?
No.
No.
This is just based on what has been in place. Because we have not brought forward any of the increases into any of the estimates. We wanted to talk with the group first before we've added any of the new factors.
It would, it would just cost us five percent, basically, right?
Of the total capital rate.
Right. John?
Yeah, I, I don't think the townships would object, object to the, uh, full-time staff. I prefer that over the third station that doesn't benefit townships. I mean, I don't see Southbridge at the distance, those firemen are not gonna be coming out to township unless it's a major fire, I would say. So, I mean, if we pick up costing full-time, I think it's a better benefit. I, I don't know how the breakdown would be on this third fire station.
Well, the, the third fire station eventually, instead of me, instead of Shakopee, calling Savage for mutual aid or Prairie Lake, we would call our third station. Eventually, we get to three stations, it'll be, we'll, we'll be in some kinda station paging, we'll have to. We can't send sixty-five firefighters if, at night, especially to a fire alarm. We're gonna have to go to some station paging where, 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 where you're better utilizing our money and doing station paging. And until we can get to that point, it's, we're at the mercy of what we have right now.
Clay?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but if I'm understanding how generally things work when there's a major fire, like a house on fire or something. If there's something in Jackson Township, you know, Station Two runs out to that immediately, but Station One and, and the new station, assuming we're looking out a couple of years, from Southbridge, they're, they're covering the rest of the city that's left uncovered, because, you know, Station Two is, is off in the townships now. If it, if it's a, a real fire, like a barn or, or something really going, then we've got typically, like, fifteen different fire departments from seven, or responses from seven or eight different communities. And, and the whole, whether it's two stations or three out of Shakopee, kinda becomes lost in, in the whole major response from the whole surrounding area. I, 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 I would encourage you not to think of Station Three out in Southbridge as, as not being associated with you in any way at all. I mean, it, it's, we're all kinda working together and, and covering each other's backs and, you know, shifting areas of coverage when one station is out for, for a call. You know, it's just-
I'd, I'd, not the way to say it.
My sense of it is, it's just a, a large total network of, you know, covering each other's backs, that-
Firefighters are firefighters. It doesn't matter what station they come out of.
But you would probably keep one station staying back in case there is a fire in town.
Yeah, well, right now, we don't do that. When we-
But I mean, if you had three.
If, if we had the personnel to do it, yes, we would probably utilize something, one of our stations to hang back, or a, a truck to hang back to cover our town. Because they know our town. They know what the area, they know how to, a quicker response. And we, we, we would still rely on our neighbors for the, the additional manpower. So, once we got bigger, yes, we would probably hold on to one truck in town, so we could utilize that to our favor.
Bob?
In a rural township fire, other than maybe a grass fire or something that isn't life-threatening, um, but if you have a house or a, or barn, barn fire, you're gonna need more than two tanker trucks anyway, so you're gonna call for mutual aid for tankers, aren't you?
That is correct.
So, you know, your, your scenario with having Southbridge cover the rest of the town, um, you would probably only take two stations out there, and then tankers from your mutual aid.
It, it, each scenario's gonna be different.
Yeah, each fire is different.
It really is. It all depends time of day, how many, how quick our response is. I mean, there's a lot of variables that are gonna play into every decision that we make. And them, them decisions gotta be made within minutes or seconds of, of us getting the call, so for me to say that this is what's gonna happen, I, I can't do that, because there's so many variables. We may be out on another call already when we get called out to you. Um, so there's, there's so many variables that we have to think about as we process the information that's coming in.
This Southbridge going out to, to the townships.
Councilwoman.
I'll put a little bit different spin on it. Ten years ago, when I started doing this job, I think we had forty-six or forty-seven firefighters. And that was before the peak growth. And now, that we're quite a bit bigger, we haven't expanded as fast on a department. And really, what it boils down to is, with this kinda growth that we've seen, if we don't expand our department in some way, shape, or form, the service to you guys is gonna go down. Because our priority is this town. And, at least from my perspective, it is. So, you know, we can't keep growing as a city and not grow the assets and the manpower to, to meet the need, uh, not only for ourselves growing, but for you, you guys too. So, at some point, you know, something's gonna have to give. We're gonna have, we're gonna have to have the manpower and the equipment to be able to take care of our own end and get the folks we serve.
Chris was over here next.
Yeah, well, the only thing I was gonna say is, uh, my only question was, is at what point would we implement this? Um, as you guys all know, we've already levied for twenty-
Thirteen.
Twenty thirteen. At, how do we, you, you understand what I'm saying. We're all trying to stay within a budget, just like you guys. Um, we're not against anything per se, but we also wanna make sure that, uh,
We want our ass covered, period.
That's a nice way to say it.
Well, and, and not to be controversial, but when a fire comes in, I don't care where it is. I don't care if it's a city, township. It's the number one priority of my, my job. I am going to go put that out to the best of my ability and our department's ability. Um, I don't care what jurisdiction it's in. So, that's just my take.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, Bob, do you have anything else you wanted to say there?
He just answered it.
All right. Anyone else have anything? Councilman Clay?
No, I'll go after you.
A quick comment regarding the subject came up briefly about incentive pay for, for a di, daytime response crew. I'm not sure that that holds much promise as far as getting a better response. If our firefighters were motivated by money, none of them would be doing this job to begin with, you know, for ten bucks an hour and having to pretty much, you know, route your whole life around being available for, to respond to, to fires. It's, you know, the money is, is certainly not the motivating factor for them. It's, they get to play with a lot of big, bright, shiny, expensive toys.
What you graciously provided for us. Thank you.
That's, that's their motivation.
I, I just have one thing. Um, it, it just reiterates what we've all heard around the table, is it all goes back to, um, how much is it worth when we make that call? And we want service out there. Our house is on fire, whatever. What is it gonna cost us? What does that mean? Are we gonna be covered? And then we have to back into it that way to say, is it something that we're willing to pay for? Is it something that we really want to be protected from? I'd like to know if I pick up the phone and my house is on fire, that I have people that are ready to respond. I mean, to me, that's very important. Um, Rick gave me a little lesson over the phone about how a fire increases exponentially after so many minutes, and it's amazing to really take a look at what impact it has. So, um, it's one of those things to really, really think about it when you're, when you're talking about maybe just doing paid-on-call versus four dedicated people. Because I know there's a lot of other things that they can be doing proactively, and things that we don't have time for, and I say "we," I'm talking collectively, the fire department that services all these three areas, um, that they really can be doing on those four paid full-time firefighters. That there is some things maybe to help eliminate possibly some of the fires, if they can identify some of the areas where there's potential hazards that they didn't know about. And there might be some other things that we can do with these businesses, like, you see when you go, uh, there's firefighter needs to get in, when a building is closed down for the day, they have keys to get in or whatever. There's a lot of work that can be done in those areas, too. So, I think it all comes down to what it, what are all of us that are representing all the taxpayers think they're willing to pay for, for that security of having someone come when you pick up the phone.
In a timely manner.
In a timely manner, yes. Nobody likes to pay money. Honestly, nobody likes to pay.
I'll be the first one to say that I'm not. Adding full-time firefighters is only gonna make my job harder. It really will.
I actually disagree with that. I don't mind, I don't mind paying for something, I just don't like to be getting took. You know, if I'm gonna pay for something, that's fine, but I don't like to see my money being squandered either.
Oh, we don't either.
So, I'm not saying that about this proposal, I'm just saying, in general.
All right, any other fire questions?
At this point, I guess I would like to see what we have, and what it's gonna cost if you add them, the closest that you can estimate that.
Twelve, twelve thousand dollars.
That's exactly right.
Twelve thousand dollars for our, for our fire standby fee, according to this projection, a year.
Add it on to what we're paying now.
Four years, so the first year would be half of that.
So, what, what do we have, four hundred households roughly? Thirty bucks. Thirty bucks a household.
But it'd be-
Well done, Madam Treasure.
It'd be on what is proposed on your paper, so I don't think there'd be any increase from last year to this year.
Becoming in two thousand fourteen.
Because right now, if you look at, if you look at it, you have, you've, you've gone down in what you're going to pay.
Because of the adjustments we made on both the pension and the equipment.
So, the, I don't believe the increase would show any difference.
Thirteen would be fairly flat.
Flat, right.
Fourteen would be the year you would see that. So, from the standpoint of what you've already levied, you would be in a safer position.
And the, the equipment going down isn't because we're getting rid of equipment, it's because we determined that we've got a longer life effective lifespan for that equipment than we were originally calculating, so.
It's, 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 some of it's lifespan, some of it is, uh, projected costs for that new equipment. Some of it was inflated a little bit more than what it should've been.
There's a change in formulas, you recall, at the last meeting.
There's a change in formulas, you recall, at the last meeting, police and public works. We're seeing an increase in the fire department, it's gonna have a decrease, just to get things where they need to be.
Do you guys have a question over here? I see all this side talk on the table.
Yeah, we're bumping heads here.
All right.
We sell tickets.
Well, it's like the Savage Fire Department told me forty years ago, they never lost a basement. We don't, we wanna save the basement and the house, okay? Now, he's talking lead times from, you know, what, five minutes to twenty minutes or thirty minutes, depending on where they're at and everything. What will those four full-time give us an advantage in time on versus volunteers?
It gives you the advantage of being able to send a team in with a hose to go into the structure.
I understand that, but I mean, time-wise, they still have to get in the truck and they still have to get out there.
If they get there soon enough, they can do an interior attack and take care of it right away. Otherwise, you get to that point where it's escalated and all you can do is surround and drown, you know? You just surround the place and pour water on it until it eventually goes out, but everything inside is lost. There's a very narrow timeframe there that, you know, you either get there in time to get inside and attack it and get it done with, or you don't, you know?
Yeah, but full-time, is that gonna give us that advantage? That's the next thing.
Are you asking if it takes it from the fifteen minutes down to the eight?
That is, that would be my intention, that we'd go from fifteen, and our new standard would be eight-minute response time during the day.
Including the townships?
We would do our best on the townships.
You got more distance to travel.
Yeah, it's gonna be tough in the townships to get to that.
In fact, there's even more, response time is probably even more important in townships where you don't have a ready water supply, to be able to get in there and attack it quickly. Because, you know, once you've lost that advantage, then you're hauling water to surround.
What has really done this to us is this new construction. The lightweight construction has really turned the fire service upside down. On a, just for an example, on a unprotected, lightweight, constructed basement, I have ten minutes to floor collapse. So, after ten minutes, our guys are not going into an unprotected basement, into a first-floor, second-floor, it doesn't matter. I cannot justify sending them in there and having that floor collapse and losing a firefighter, unless I know there's a life in there. It's all about protecting the firefighter and protecting the citizens of our jurisdiction.
Councilman.
Does, by having a full-time crew on staff, does that give us a little bit of leeway on timing for the third station?
In my opinion, yes. I, there'll be critics out there that'll say no to me, but by having that full-time staff onboard, I can meet some response times out in Southbridge a lot better during the day. At night, I still have a good response, so I think we could slowly move into the third station and evaluate it as we move forward. Do I think it's still gonna be needed? In my opinion, yes, to meet our ISO rating. If you don't wanna meet the ISO rating, we don't have to build that station either.
What is our response time out to Southbridge now?
Our response time out at Southbridge? If I just took Southbridge, we're probably closer to eighteen minutes during the day.
What about at night?
At night, we're pushing the twelve-minute mark.
All right, any other fire questions? All right, thank you very much, Chief. Moving on to Parks and Rec, Parks, Recreation and Natural Resources, three B.
Thank you, Mr. Members, members of council and members of the townships. Fire is always a hard one to follow for me. I should go first.
We'll put you first next year.
She thought it was flying boy.
Turn his mic off.
The Recreation Department provides different services for the city and the surrounding residents within the community. We do scheduling and coordinating of all of our parks and athletic fields outside. We do our youth and adult programs, both enrichment programs as well as athletic programs. And we have special events. We run our community center, ice arena, aquatic park, and the youth building. And then we also work on land development. I'll get to natural resources in a little bit later. Right now, we provide the different services that you see in your packet, which are recreation programs, aquatics, ice arena management, park services, the teen center, recreation management, park development, community center operations, and recreation facilities. I currently have four recreation supervisors, each of which have different responsibilities that they are responsible for. I have one office service worker, one secretary, and then myself. And then we have a hundred and twenty ongoing and seasonal part-time employees that do a variety of different activities for us. One of the future proposed positions that we're looking at possibly adding for 2013 or beyond is a recreation facilities maintenance manager, which I'll cover in just a bit in a little bit more detail. But highlights of our 2013 budget is this year, for many, many years, the Parks and Recreation Department, as well as Community Education Department of the school district, have put out a joint activities brochure. We actually, you should have, for those in our school district, which I believe should be everybody here, you should have received your brochure last week, because registration begins tomorrow. But this is our last, this fall brochure is our last brochure that we're actually doing as a joint project. It's not something that happened between the city and community under the school district. We very much still work in partnership and work very closely together. But our brochures have gotten bigger, both our programs and the community ed programs have gotten more intense. We offer a lot of different things. We don't try to duplicate our services, and we will continue not to try to duplicate our services. But we've gotten a lot of feedback as we've grown from the residents of, they're just very confused with the joint catalog that's flipped. You have to flip one side, and then you flip it over upside down to the other side. We get multiple registrations for community ed, they get multiple registrations for us, and we go back and forth. So, the community education director and myself have talked it through with our staffs, and we're gonna try to do a individual brochure, starting with winter. So, you'll get two brochures now each season instead of one. They'll be smaller, hopefully a little bit clearer and easier for citizens to read and be able to get into our programs. We'll see how it goes, and then we'll evaluate it together. But by no means are we separate entities. We are still going to coordinate, to talk, do special events together and work together. And we'll be having public service announcements go out and those sort of things as we go through this process before our winter one comes available. But with that, that's one of our big additions to our 2013 budget for the Recreation Department. We've added approximately about twenty thousand dollars additional funding into our budget, basically for design and publishing services. We pay fifty percent of the bill now that we do as our joint catalog. Now that we'll do our own, we will need to design it and print it and publish it on our own. A lot of that is mailing. We have to still decide what that mailing cost is going to be for us, because the city does not have our own indictment, the school district had that, and we always went through them. So, twenty thousand, we will evaluate that for the next, for 2014 budget, 2013, we put that amount in based on what other communities pay for their brochures that they put out themselves, design services, printing, and publishing, mailing. So, that's our bigger, big addition this year. Also, we, I did the teen center, I just wanted to highlight that the teen center budget is put together as it has always been, as operating the teen center. I know we had a proposal from our hockey association earlier this year that came before the city council, was put back to the park board to discuss whether or not we would change the use of the teen center. I put in the city council's activity packet last week that the park board did unanimously decide that right now, they feel the teen center is a service that we provide, they wanna continue to provide it to the city, and they don't feel that that space should be used for an additional use at this time, so they're not making a recommendation. So, the 2013 budget reflects the use of the teen center as it has been over the years. No significant changes. We had an addition to our park development portion of the budget, which is a very small portion of the budget, but when talking with the finance director, we moved our ongoing park signage program that we've been doing the last number of years, I think we started in 2008. It'll end with all of our parks having signs, as long as we don't build a lot of new parks. By 2015 is what our last parks will have their new signs. That has been now moved into our operating budget instead of the park reserve fund. And then one-time operational expenses that we've added this year is we are going to try to replace the two small pool slides at the San Adventure Aquatic Park. These are the chute slides that are in the middle of the pool, but they're deteriorating their original, or they're not original to the pool itself, but they've been there. Now, I'm drawing mine blank of when, what year we put them in, but they're beyond their lifespan, they're becoming corroded, and we need to do some repairs on them. Sandblasting and painting of the diving well, I actually got a quote back on this, and this may be something I pull out of our general fund and we bring back to you as a improvement package, either this, later this year or next year, because the seventy-five hundred is not going to cover it. So, I just got yesterday, or Friday, I got that quote back from that person. So, we need to do some minor pool concrete repairs, and we are going to try to replace our skate sharpener, which is original to our community center at sixteen years old. They don't even make that skate sharpener anymore, so it's hard for us to get parts, so we'd like to replace that as well. One capital improvement that's being brought forward to you is a security system upgrade for the community center. I'll cover this in a little bit more detail in just a second. A little bit more about the department is that we are liaisons to two boards and commissions. One is I am the liaison to the, well, city council meetings, and then to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, as well as the EAC, which I'll discuss, natural resources. The recreation supervisors are also required to go to the, in front of the city council or advisory board if they have a specific item in which they're in charge of. Future budget year issues that we wanna just keep in mind as we move forward is just dealing with the challenges of providing adequate services with limited staffing. As we continue to grow our programs and the city continues to grow, our staff has more and more on their plate, and we're becoming to get to our limits of, we need to choose what we can and can't provide, and to provide it well. Deal with this challenge of providing adequate spaces for our sports associations, is something the park board has been working on since the beginning of the year. I did an update with the city council earlier this year, just on the growth of what the affiliated sports associations are having, and do see over the next couple of years as the city continues to grow. We have a few ideas of how we can develop some undeveloped city-owned park land. Right now, we continue to work on maintaining and improving our recreation facilities, and then working with the healthcare reform law and how it pertains to our part-time employees. That's something that I know our assistant city administrator and human resource department are working on learning, and then we'll decide how that may affect our staffing as we move forward. Other potential issues that we just wanna look at is what services should we be providing through the community center? This has come up a few times in discussions. How facility improvements take place with our facilities? If we have to, is it always that we have to go through a public referendum, or is the city council willing to look at other ways of financing some of those improvements? Level of services to our staffing levels, I touched on that just briefly. And then regularly reviewing our fees of status to park dedication fees. This is something that we, I do hope to bring forward to yet this year, to put into our fee schedule for next year, of looking at those park dedication fees and how they're evaluated versus our current land values in the city with developments. So, going to our two budget improvement items that we have, the first one is that recreation facilities maintenance manager. Currently, the maintenance that's provided in our community center right now is provided through our facilities maintenance division, which has three full-time staff. One of those full-time staff does work primarily in the community center and at the youth building, but he does also help out on the other facility buildings. He does more of the minor fixes in the building, the room setups, the snow removals, that sort of thing. The idea behind this facilities maintenance manager is they would work solely at, for the recreation department. I would then be their supervisor. They would be able to concentrate more on the community center, the youth building, the aquatic park, as far as putting together the capital improvement plan, the long-term maintenance plans of each building, becoming very familiar with each building, to be able to look long-term, to provide the regular day-to-day upkeep, to oversee the cleaning staff that's there, whether it's the contract services that we plan to keep and maintain, or whether we have part-time staff doing some cleaning, however we do that. But basically, it's someone that can really take an ownership in the community center. And the community center is sixteen years old. As you know, over the years, we've had to put a number of improvements on it, because we had the water infiltration issue. We just replaced the roof. As it ages, we need to keep up on these, and right now, we've played more catch-up than we have with long-term maintenance. If we can get somebody in there that can put a schedule, that has time to put a schedule, right now with our limited staffing, we don't have somebody that really does in-depth planning for the community center. I try, I know that our facilities maintenance person tries, but if someone can be committed to the community center, I think we could do a better job of that long-term maintenance and foreseeable future to increase our use out of that building without having major fixes all at once. The grade level, we're looking at a grade level five. And then personnel cost the first year, assuming we hire in March of next year, would be about fifty-five thousand. So, that's that position. And then the other one was the security camera upgrade. One thing I wanted to, this is one thing we wanted to bring forward, our security camera upgrade. We currently have sixteen cameras at the community center, inside and outside. It does help with our staffing, to be able to monitor the entire facility with limited staffing. We usually have two people at the front desk at all times, except for during the day, then we have one person, and then our full-time staff is there. But when full-time staff is not there, we manage the building with two people. The cameras help with that. They have helped minimally in, if we have crime, if we have car break-ins, if we have thefts, we've been able to get some footage off our camera system. But if you ask the police department, our security cameras are not high enough resolution and strong enough right now to get the actual feed we need to make an arrest. They get an idea, but it's not usually good enough for them to really work with. But the main part of this is that being that it's six or seven years old, it was put in 2005, the typical span of the memory on those systems is about five years. So, we're over that. We are coming to find that we have gaps in our recording, black spots, and it usually always happens when we need that certain footage, is we have a downtime that we can't get to. So, we did get a quote to upgrade the system and add two additional high-resolution cameras to our parking lot that would have the ability to see license plate, which is what, when we talk to the police department, would help them in identifying more of the crime, if we have any in the parking lot. It would be, they would have more use for that. They still don't know if the recording would be very useful for them, so that's really a policy question of, do we need, do you feel we need the security cameras at the community center? Is it something that we wanna provide? Right now, it's a service that, it's partly a service that we provide, the people feel that they come in there, it's covered, it's safe. We have been able to find, you know, some thefts in the locker rooms just by knowing who's going in and out, so it's been useful. But for the price taken, is it something that city council wants to continue to offer at the community center? Do you feel that it's that high enough priority? The crime we have up there has been, knock on wood, to this date, pretty minimal, more thefts, break-ins, a few fights from the youth, and that sort of thing that we can use, but nothing major at this point. So, that's a package we'd like to bring forward. With that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Councilwoman Whiting.
I'm looking at the budget from 2012, 2013. It looks like wages went up forty thousand, but benefits went down fifty thousand.
Julie.
Julie can speak.
Back in my memory banks here.
You don't even have to stand up for a microphone when we're sitting down here.
No, I don't, if I get close enough to a mic. There was some allocation of some payroll that we've been looking through to determine what costs should go through rec, what costs should go through natural resources, how are the cost-sharing departmentally, it gets back to that reallocation of things within the general fund.
One more follow-up, Mr. Mayor, please. Give me a quick breakdown, I don't wanna beat it up too much, but what are the professional services?
What is included in the professional services? It's the, mostly it's other professional services, which is kind of a broad line item, but we, our biggest area that we've added funds to is we've added fifteen thousand in our recreation management area on that line item for the brochure design.
That's not under communications?
No. No, we have that under professional. No, we have that under professional services. So that also entails our independent contractors that we employ for our classes, our special events, entertainment.
Other questions from council first?
Councilwoman Lehman.
Twenty thirteen, community center facilities, dollar amount. I'm trying to be able to compare it to 2012, and I'm not sure that I can do that. I don't think I have the ability to do that, do I?
Which specifically are we looking at? I've got a 2012 budget, Mr. Lehman.
Professional services under 0678-969.
0678, okay, and which line item?
It's ninety-six thousand nine hundred dollars under professional services. That particular line item compared to 2012, what was 2012, do you know?
Okay, that's the total, in total, the ninety-six nine is the amount in total compared to, you want the total for 2012? Yeah, I'd have to run you those numbers, Ms. Lehman, I don't have it in that breakdown compared to 2012.
Mr. Mayor.
Chris.
It's up six thousand dollars.
Up six?
It's up six thousand dollars.
And some of that flows back into the payroll.
All right, a couple other questions, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
The recreation facilities maintenance manager, a couple of questions on that. The position, you know, you kind of explained how it'd be for the community center, for the youth building, the aquatics park, this stuff. Where's the line of separation? Is it structures, like it might be the park buildings, not necessarily park equipment? Where Public Works would still maintain the equipment in the parks?
This facilities manager would do nothing with park buildings. It would only be.
Structures.
No, it wouldn't even be that. It would only be the community center and the youth building, which are currently, right now, managed by our facilities maintenance department, and the aquatic center, which is our department, our staff does that. Public Works helps with our startup and the facilities maintenance helps with startup and shutdown, but we do all the operations with our recreation supervisor. We would do nothing with park shelters, that would still all be Public Works, so it would make no changes to.
When I say structures, I mean like the building, not the playground equipment.
Right, but Public Works maintains everything in our parks.
Right.
Buildings and playground equipment, bathrooms. Facilities maintenance right now only does city facilities. They don't, and the youth building is the one park building that they oversee. They don't, so there wouldn't, the separation wouldn't change from what it is now, other than this person would specifically only have those three buildings, which then frees up, well, doesn't free up, but it would take facilities maintenance person out of the community center and the youth building. And then it would take, it would allow our recreation supervisor who oversees the aquatic center to do the aquatic programming and managing, rather than having to worry about chemicals, operations, pool pumps.
So would this person do the HVAC at the aquatics park and community center?
Yes.
And it says to a higher level of maintenance, is the current level of maintenance that in all the city buildings not acceptable? Or is there just special needs in that area that are different?
Well, because the community center is open seven days a week and the amount of traffic that goes through, we just don't have the staffing to really keep up on a lot of the little maintenance that we need to keep ongoing. So, yeah, I think it's the use of the building that.
Yeah, what's my other question? Oh, the cameras, didn't we put in one new camera? Couple of years ago, three or four years ago?
We did, three years ago, yes, we added one camera.
Will we keep using that camera, if we upgrade anything?
Yes, yes, we would. We would keep using all of the sixteen cameras, we would just add the additional two high-resolution that would have the license plate. So the two that are out on the front entrance right now would be shifted elsewhere to other locations that we can use them.
And we'll put the better license plate ones.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
Looking at cars.
Councilwoman Whiting.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. So this maintenance facility person would actually do the painting, the cleaning of the floors, carpet maintenance, they wouldn't be just managing professional service to come in and do that, right?
No. I mean, we would still contract out some professional services. Like, we would still keep the cleaning company, I foresee that, that does our general building cleaning.
More involved waxing of floors, painting and patching and that kind of things that are needed up there.
Yes. And then, depending upon what their qualifications are when we write the job description of whether or not we currently have a contract for a company to come in and look at our HVAC systems and cooling systems. So, you know, that would be something we work out with the qualifications of this person, but I wouldn't see that changing, they would still manage those.
They change the filters, but they're probably not going to rebuild the compressor.
Right.
Other questions from council? All right, any questions from township folks? Jamie, can you explain to an overview of how township rolls into recreation stuff?
Yes, and I'm sorry I didn't touch on that, there is no change, that's why I didn't touch on it. But currently, for all of our recreation programs that we offer, we have a resident and non-resident fee for the classes that are ongoing, not the one-day classes. But the classes that are ongoing, and the townships of Louisville and Jackson Township have agreed to pay, it's a ten-dollar difference for the resident and non-resident fee. So they've agreed to pay that ten dollars for their residents. So when we have registrations, the resident from Louisville Township can sign up for the class, and then there's a button that they check that says, "I'm a Louisville Township resident." It deducts the ten-dollar non-resident difference, and it goes into a separate database where then we can run and send a bill at the end of the year to each township, where then they know how many residents that they have. We're still working on that software, we have a few glitches when the addresses come up, but our office service worker tries to go through them pretty thoroughly and work with the townships to make sure that they're accurate on, you know, that these residents are all Louisville and Jackson. But so far, it's worked very well, it gives us a good count, too, of who from the townships are using our services. But they get that resident fee, basically.
Is that working for everybody in the room?
Yep.
All right.
When was the last time that fee was addressed? How long has it been at the ten dollar?
Last year was when we changed it to the ten dollar. We had tried a thirty-six dollar one-time yearly fee, and it was very hard to manage. So last year was when we did that.
I did have one more thing.
Councilwoman Lehman.
Can we put fifty bucks in here somewhere to get the skate park fixed? Where they got all the cones set up?
It was fixed on Friday, they did the patching.
So when's it dry?
There was kids on it today, I haven't been up there, but it should be, it should be good.
You haven't been skating lately?
Too many cones in the way.
Yeah, we had a major crack in the asphalt, but it did get patched.
Good, all right, so seeing no other questions. Jamie, do you have anything else we need to talk about with this part?
Not for recreation, no.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Powell, and Ms. Coleman, who in?
I just, I want to make sure I do this all the time, is I want, to let the record show how pleased we are with the shock and bee fire services that's provided to Louisville Township. You guys agree?
Yep.
You guys still got our basements.
Beautiful, Councilwoman Clay.
I just wanted, for my own peace of mind, we talked about daytime duty crew for the fire department being about thirty dollars a year, which would be about eight cents a day, something like that. We didn't actually ask for your hands to raise or anything, but is that sound something fairly reasonable to all of you?
Okay.
Hopefully, Stan. Depends on whose house, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Neal.
Just as far as other issues, and I'll focus it primarily for this end of the table. It's been recommended by Scott County that we start to think about a land use planning task force at the intersection of 169 and 69. I know there's been some interest in having some development out there. We need to figure out how to get utilities and those sorts of things. But probably this fall, we're going to be starting to put something together, be thinking about how you want to be represented on that, be Scott County, Jackson Township, the city, and major property owners in the area.
Oh, and I'm the liaison to the Utility Commission. They have an ongoing concern about being able to get enough, you know, infrastructure in for their water distribution system. If a development's going to happen in the township set that, you know, top of the bluff, you know, the first or second elevations up there, that results in a sizable necessary investment of some major stuff for the Utilities Commission. So they're always, you know, if there's any, if you hear something, you know, blowing in the wind development-wise, you know, anytime something looks like it might be happening or potentially happening up on those higher elevations, if you could maybe just, you know, give the utilities a call and a little bit of a heads-up so that they can kind of be thinking about it, you know, give it as much lead time as possible for them, they would certainly appreciate it.
Wonderful, well, thank you very much, everybody, for being here. Is there any other parting words, Neil? Anybody have other comments?
Thanks for coming, always appreciate your input, folks.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, beautiful, with that, I will entertain a motion to break for ten minutes. Councilwoman Lehman.
Motion to break for ten minutes.
Second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Whiting, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passage unanimously.
Next, it's your turn to bring the coloches.